She told me that she was.
We thought she was with you. You were supposed to pick her up with you.
Did you both pick her up with you?
No, she said, I've got somebody that's running down there with beating us.
It was you, she was talking about you riding.
Well, she told me that, so I guess. I was sitting, and she saw me before she came in here, because I was working on this. And I saw her, and she said, we don't worry about me, and I have somebody else that's all that matters.
I'll leave Mr. Here.
Oh, we can go to the ballgame.
Yeah. If you'll come early.
That would be a pleasure.
We'll have a big time, Charlie.
I know.
I know.
I'll save your seat.
I feel sure of it.
I'll save your seat. Another nice.
Did they have a concession?
Yeah.
A really interesting snack.
Says, how about? Hey, now, we can stay in session, thank you, I watch the game a little.
You just need another score in the end.
I'm a basketball assistant coach, it'll work.
All right, that worked. That worked. I'm not, I say, I'll come get you.
She said she's turning in a rotten one.
Mine says six twenty-eight. What's she ever saying? Said, wait on her. Wait on us, wait on us. She walks in, I say, irritant emotions with Jerry.
Right here, and then we'll let Shirley come.
Not me. I got us dressed up for the ballgame.
Okay. Well, now, you're going, I'm going to be some hobby, Charlie.
They don't, well, they play different acts in the elementary, so they won't.
Juicy, juicy, honey.
That's okay, right here. Dr. Rippon had three games, we've had four.
Wow, that's a lot of games.
So they're playing monkey toasty games, all going.
Of course, there wasn't those good today, that kind of helped a little.
They're in the cabin, I don't know.
That's a good place to play, they did.
Alex, we were worried.
We keep waiting for our other.
You're right on time.
We died in waiting for not bringing.
Yeah, we first started. Exactly six thirty.
Your goodness, Alice. We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. The opening session prayer will be given by Rick Dotson, the pledge of allegiance by Ms. Shirley Myers.
Let us pray. Our most gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for this great night you gave us. Thank you for, Lord, for watching over and keeping us safe and healthy every day of our lives, Father. Father, we ask that tonight, everything we do be pleasing first and foremost to you, Father, and be for the betterment of the children of Oakland County School System. Father, we thank you for the life you give us and the freedom and joy you give us each day. Father, we ask you to forgive us when impelled, in the name of Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Number four, approval of the minutes for the October eighteenth, twenty twenty-two meeting. Motion by Mitch Stonecifer.
Second.
Second by Rick Dotson, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Number five, any additions or deletions to the proposed agenda? Crystal.
I move that we add to the agenda that fiscal year twenty-three, central cafeteria revision number one.
So we'll put that under number five. Fiscal year twenty-three, central cafeteria.
Six.
Amendment one. I've got a motion by Mitch Stonecifer, second by Jarman Hicks, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That'll be number five, under new business. Number six, approval of the November eighth, twenty twenty-two meeting agenda.
Motion.
Second. Motion by Ms. Alice Reed, second by Wayne Taylor, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Uh, number, under executive action, uh, we'll, uh, we'll do these one by one since it's spending money, uh, and take roll calls. Uh, number one, uh, approved bid of one hundred fifteen thousand, eight hundred eighty-six dollars for seventy-eight pasture bluebird vision bus for Central States. Uh, that was already in our budget for the twenty-two, twenty-three years, so if that's in our budget, we probably don't need to roll call that unless we want to. Y'all want to roll call it? So we'll just go on down, because that was already in our budget. Uh, number two, and we'll just do all these together because they are the lowest bids. Uh, approved bid for two dollars and nine cents a gallon for propane from Dry County Propane Gas Incorporated. Number three, approve the following bid for fuel services from Rogers Petroleum. Two seventy-one, eight-nine gallons for eighty-seven octane gasoline, three thirty-eight gallons for diesel over the county bus garage, three sixty-one for diesel Richmond Elementary, three sixty-one for diesel Wilson Elementary. And number four, approved lowest bid of two hundred thirty-eight thousand, two hundred seventy-five dollars for replacement of HVAC units at Wilson Elementary from Action Heat and Cooling, and number four was from S R two point oh. I'd feel more comfortable, let's just roll call that total executive action, Crystal.
Okay. William Abston?
Yes.
Ashley Carr?
Yes.
James Klaus?
Yes.
Ricky Dodson?
Yes.
Mike Hayes?
Yes.
Jarman Hicks?
Yes.
Shirley Myers?
Yes.
Alice Reed?
Yes.
Mitch Stonecifer?
Yes.
And Wayne Taylor?
Yes.
Ten-four-zero, opposed motion passes.
Under consent agenda, uh, we'll go off through all these and, uh, I'm sorry. For executive. I'm sorry. I think a motion, so we'll take a motion for it. Motion by Rick Dotson, second by William Abston, we've already did the roll call. I apologize. Uh, under consent agenda, we'll do all these together. Number one, letters of retirement from the following, Edith Williams and Rita McDonald, those were in your packet. Number two, letters of resignation from the following, Jackie Blocker, Katie Hoag, and Kathy Taylor, uh, those also were in your packet. Uh, number three, fiscal year twenty-three, Title One, Part A, Revision Three. Number four, fiscal year twenty-three, Title Two, A, Revision Three. Number five, fiscal year twenty-three, I D E A, Part B, Revision Three. Number six, fiscal year twenty-three, Resilient School Communities Grant, Original Budget. Number seven, fiscal year twenty-three, S R three point oh, Original Budget. Number eight, fiscal year twenty-three, A R P, I D E A, Part B, Original Budget. Number nine, fiscal year twenty-three, A R P, I D E A, Preschool, Original Budget. So I'll entertain a motion to approve all the consent agenda items.
I make a motion.
Motion by Ms. Shirley Myers, second by William Abston, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Under new business, number one, consider second reading of approval of Board Policy four point six oh three, Promotion and Retention. This was the first reading in last month's packet. I'll entertain a motion to approve. Motion by Ms. Ashley Carr, second by James Klaus, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Number two, consider approval of fiscal year twenty-three, S R two point oh and S R three point oh application for school year twenty-two through twenty-three. Motion by James Klaus.
Second.
Second by Mitch Stonecifer, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Number three, consider approval of the twenty-two, twenty-three agreement between the Oakland County Board of Education and the Livingston Police Department for the School Resource Officer Program. Uh, this was in the packet that was emailed out as well. Uh, the only, those two changes that was in there, and those changes were discussed the day we had the meeting, um, at the county office, so Dr. Holmes got those.
The only changes that they requested was, if you want to go back and look at it, it was on page two. It was under the duties and responsibilities of the School Resource Officers. The changes were very, very minor. Um, I'll read you the change here on this one. Uh, each S R O shall be assigned to a school on a full-time basis. During those hours, that school is in regular session, the S R O may also be assigned additional responsibilities as determined by the Livingston Police Department, she encased an emergency. And that's what, that's what it says, and the only thing they added was whether at school or otherwise in the community. That last little clause is the only, only change. And then, on the same page, and so under item number three, B three, uh, they added in, you remember where we're talking about the software, uh, where we go around and check the doors to make sure that they're locked? Uh, it is worded as if that is already open going, and it's not actually open going everywhere yet. A H is, A H is farther ahead than others, and we're, we're in the process of getting that taken care of. But they added two words in that, it says, when available. Because it's not available everywhere yet, so when available.
Are you happy with that contract?
Yes. Have we, all of the stuff that we're supposed to do in there, like providing the room and everything to all the S R Os, have one of those? With the desk and the phone cabinet and the chair, and a place to lock their records and all that stuff? I believe all of them do, I'll double check. Okay, I just wanted to make sure that we were fulfilling our obligation. No one has, uh, no one has said anything that they needed or anything. Okay. But I'll, I'll double check.
Any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the S R O contract.
I like your point.
Motion by James Klaus, second by Wayne Taylor, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Uh, number four, consider approval to purchase a portion of the weight room equipment out of the remaining contingency funds from football stadium project. Uh, so the last meeting we had during the work session, we talked about just go ahead and purchase and help and purchase that with a contingency fund. Uh, Crystal got with the auditor just to make sure. Uh, so the proper way to do that would be for the board to approve the purchase of what we would pay, uh, pay for it out of G P, then save it out of contingency fund, then put it back in their account to offset that. Because they said, once we approve the building program, that unless it was a permanent fixture, uh, that was going to go in a building, then it would have to be different than what we already approved. So we need to approve the purchase. Uh, once the purchase happens, we'll save that in contingency. Uh, and I printed a copy and put in everybody's packet, uh, our current contingency funds from the football program. Which is this paper. Um, so item one through twenty-five, um, I'm sorry, through twenty-six, that's all the current contingency funds we've used so far. Um, based on our last meeting we had at the high school. Uh, number twenty-seven was a curb install near the Hall of Fame wall. Uh, number twenty-eight was adding sod between the field and the fieldhouse. I just put an estimate of what I think that would cost in there. Uh, then the weight room equipment, um, if we spent twenty-six thousand, which it looks like that's what that number would be right now, uh, that would still leave us ninety-two thousand dollars. Obviously, that extra twenty-six thousand would come back, uh, to this after we, uh, save that in the contingency fund. Uh, so I talked to Coach Flat, he's got the quarterback going, paying for eight thousand of that. Um, he's waiting on, uh, the lettuce plant is going to try to donate, but he's not going back for that, he's putting it around there in the U C M C. He's waiting on that as well. So I talked to Crystal about that and how it would affect that. If that money's come in before we pay that, then we can obviously pay less, um, than, uh, the twenty-six thousand, so.
We don't have any concerns about that transfer of funds being a concern of the Comptroller's Office?
That's the reason we're approving it tonight, because the last meeting, we wasn't going to approve it since it was already approved in the, uh, building pro, that program.
Yeah.
Uh, and this contingency, when it was already approved in the program. So we were just going to go ahead and purchase it, and not, just because we all agreed on it. But, uh, Comptroller's Office said that we would need to approve it as a board, pay for it out of our G P fund, that once we save the money in contingency, we can put that money back in our G P.
Okay.
So that's the reason that it's on the agenda tonight to approve, uh, based on the feedback from the Comptroller's Office.
So do we need a, um, a motion specific to that dollar amount, or does?
Yeah, so, so the bids came in, and it was thirty-four thousand, sixty-nine dollars and four cents, I believe.
Come in and over again, one.
Uh, thirty-four thousand, sixty-nine dollars and four cents. Um, and if you want a copy of that, you can, Crystal can email that out to everybody. Uh, but it's pretty much brand-new equipment. Uh, there are also a fifty-five-hundred-dollar credit for trading in some old equipment, uh, then they're shipping and handling charges on that. So I just backed out the eight thousand, I said eight thousand, sixty-nine oh four, they can pay, uh, then we can pay the twenty-six. And obviously, if there's more funds coming in after that, then obviously, we just pay less, uh, than that, but that's the most we approve to pay.
And Dr. Holman, uh, I know the football players would have opportunity to use that equipment, but what other groups would have the opportunity to share with that? Even the others can't do, the others can't. Baseball, softball. Basketball. Basketball. Soccer.
Everybody. Coach Flat does credit a living class in fifth block, which is a credit class, uh, so they already do that. The last time I talked to Coach Flat, uh, he said the, uh, softball teams already asked him about certain times, and he's gave them times that they could come in and use it as well, uh, for that, so. So it'll be for everybody's use. Any other questions? All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I approve.
Motion by Ms. Shirley Myers.
Second.
Second by Mitch Stonecifer. Uh, that is technically spending money, so I'll ask for a roll call.
Yep.
Even though it'll come back.
Wayne Taylor?
Yes.
Mitch Stonecifer?
Yes.
Alice Reed?
Yes.
Shirley Myers?
Yes.
Jarman Hicks?
Yes.
Mike Hayes?
Yes.
Ricky Dodson?
Yes.
James Klaus?
Yes.
Ashley Carr?
Yes.
And William Abston?
Yes.
Ten-four-zero, opposed motion passes.
Uh, number five, uh, that's the addition, fiscal year twenty-three, uh, consider approval fiscal year twenty-three, central cafeteria amendment number one. Uh, this was added to your packet tonight, this was an emergency purchase, uh, for the cafeteria, Steeler went out at Richmond, so they had to get that replaced. Uh, so this is just an amendment for that one. entertain a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Rick Dotson, second by James Klaus, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Uh, then O C A recognition.
Good evening. Don't really have anything, just, teachers are working on it just through this time change, like I know y'all are. Uh, sailing towards the end of the year, the holiday season. The year's moving by fast, really fast. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Alice. I'll, anybody have anything else? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
No.
Motion by Ms. Alice Reed, second by Wayne Taylor, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Admissed. Y'all want to go straight into the work session?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. So number one on the work session. Uh, Board Policy four point two one oh, Credit Recovery. Uh, this was actually on the last meeting, we did the first reading. Uh, then, uh, based on some feedback of the, uh, state Tennessee code, which I recommended putting on the work session, we get the verbiage right, uh, on here before we put it on the meeting to actually approve the second reading. Uh, so the copy here is highlighted, uh, number eight, line eighteen, the board shall track students enrolled in credit recovery courses as directed by the Tennessee Department of Education. Uh, I think Mr. Stone, Stonecifer had asked about, uh, the director tracking that versus the board. Uh, then, I think Crystal had asked about it, T S B A, and they come back and said, based on Tennessee code annotated, uh, it says, local boards of education shall track and designated students enrolled in credit recovery cor, courses as directed by the Tennessee Department of Education. Uh, so, I mean, we can leave that in there, then put a quotation, um, you know, tracking will be done by the director with, uh, uh, quarterly reports to the board, or however y'all need to, to word that. I mean, uh, I just want to make sure the wording is right before we put it on the agenda to approve.
If y'all would like me to, I'll tell you what, what process we go through, if y'all are interested, if y'all knew. Um, the, the process that we're going through now is all the students that, that fail a course at Livingston Academy in between a fifty and a fifty-nine, those students are taught to by the counselors. Uh, and, and of course, the teachers talk to them, but the, the counselors make it a point to speak to each one of those students. And, uh, and since, since I, since we've been looking at this, um, I had one of the supervisors to develop a spreadsheet. Actually, she come up with the idea to develop the spreadsheet, but I really liked it so good, I wished it was my idea. But anyway, we are now using that spreadsheet so that any child that does fail in between that range, their name goes on there, and then, uh, who, who contacts that child, which counselor it is. Uh, and there's several questions out there, and it's asked, who contacted the parent? Uh, and then there's different ways that that child can remediate. For instance, one of the ways is, uh, the high school has what they refer to as a DECR lab, D E C R, and that stands for Dual Irrelevant Credit Recovery. But if you talk to the high school, they'll just refer to that as DECR, and it took me a while to catch on to what that was. But a student can go to the DECR lab and, and, uh, have an assignment there through the ingenuity program to make up that, to make up that credit. Or, um, they can also go to summer school for that two-week period to make it up. And there's one more way. There's three ways, I thought I had them all three written down, but. Oh, and after school, after school, that's it. There's three ways, and there's three options that a child has to make that up. And, and that, then they, that's, that's also one of the criteria that they mark, is, is how that child is making it up. On that, and we're, we're going to have different tabs on the bottom of that, so that one, that one document will keep up with the students that do not pass a class in this average, in this range, I mean, for years and years to come, like twenty-two to twenty-two school year, twenty-three, twenty-four. So you can look at the different tabs and see who all those students are and how they were made up.
How do they report that to you, that you jump around and reporting does?
Well, what I was intended to do is just, I, I'll have access to this, so it's a, kind of like a live document, I could go in and check it at any time.
And then if the board wants a monthly?
Yeah, so that, I was more than concerned about this when we read this, the first reading. Uh, because it says, verbatim, "The board shall track students." And I know I personally am not doing that, and I've not heard anyone else on the board discuss doing it. And so, uh, I'm okay with designating the director of schools to be the person who does that. But we just needed to make sure that the process is, I mean, if, if, if it says we're supposed to be responsible for that, how is it getting done? I just want us all on the same page, and we all know that the process, what the process is. I think quarterly reports on the director's report would be sufficient.
Yeah.
So long as that's what we're going to do. And I just wanted y'all to know the process of how we go about it.
And I don't, I don't think we need student names, it's just.
Absolutely not.
Number, number of students.
Yes.
What's being done, and there's, yeah.
That could be a percentage, maybe, not names, but percentage.
Percentage, yeah.
Well, I, I would think volume and percentage, too.
Yeah.
That number.
So do we want to add, uh, uh, on that line, director will report to the board, uh, each quarter, um, um, number of students and percent?
Yeah, I think it needs to be added in there. Um, we're retracting that percent. By number and percentage, is that what you're thinking? I would just include quarterly retracting. Yeah, just quarterly. I feel like that's, that's really what I was.
Now, just report, the director will report to board quarterly.
Yeah. Yeah, good. You got that, Crystal?
And we can add that to the next meeting to approve the second reading of that.
Thank y'all for researching.
Your, your, that was a good point you made up.
Thank you.
Any other questions on that?
With that out there being said, there may be, we might need to reach out to T S B A to find out where something like that is in any of the policies so that we can make sure that we're covering all the policies that are saying where the board is going to do this. Can you ask that, Crystal?
It says it also wrote in policy, it just, um, is that the board is charged with all of these things, not necessarily that you all do them yourself, but you all are supposed to ensure that these things are being done. And of course, if you have any questions ever, you can ask, uh, Dr. Holman or any of the supervisors, whatever.
Most of that's done through the director's administrative personnel.
Right. So it does, it does say that many, many, many multiple times, that you all have a lot, a lot of responsibility throughout the policy.
And once this is voted on, will this go into place this whole year? The quarterly report?
Immediately.
The policy reached voted on, becomes the effective.
Immediately.
Yeah, we've only done the first reading, so.
The second reading would be?
The December meeting.
December, so we should actually start tracking. January. January.
So we can get an update January of kind of August through December, and, uh, then we can get another one, uh, April, that would include January through March.
And another one that you would include. It's just that, you know, if there's something that's.
Oh, absolutely.
It says I'm responsible for something, and I, I don't want somebody to come back and say, well, you were responsible to track that, and you, you didn't address it.
Absolutely, and I think it's good data to review as well.
Yeah. As long as it's in the record for. Yes. Approved, so there's, it's documented.
Any other questions? All right, number two, communication from the director.
On that one, I had requested that that be put on here. I just wanted to make sure that everyone, it's, it's my goal to be as clear and transparent as I can with communication. And if any of you have any input that you'd like to give to me about communication, I'd be, I'd be very open to it. I know, I've talked with some of you, and there's, there's varying degrees of what some of you want to know, and some, some do, and some don't. But it's my goal, though, to, to give the same amount of information to everybody. Like, I like to send a text out and, uh, and send it to everybody so that everybody knows the same thing. I, I can give you one more example. I know some of you have said, uh, talking about like, if, if an ambulance arrives at a school, uh, some want to know that, and some, some don't really care if you know that or not. Well, it might even hurt everybody to know it. So I would rather give you too much information than not enough. But I, I'm very open to suggestions, if, if you can think of something that, um, that I need to give you more information about that I've not been, please feel free to let me know, and I'll, I'll try to address that. I prefer to leave my communication at a lower level, uh, anything that should come from the executive committee or make.
I prefer with my communication and board, but, uh, anything that should come from the executive community or make it out of what, I prefer that they come from whoever the chairman be. That's just my preference. I'll just send out to them, I'll receive as well.
And on the executive, I'll address that too. On the executive part, or what I've done since I've been here is, anytime that there's anything, a definite board issue like that, as soon as I have clarity about that, I call the chairman then, and then generally the chairman then will send that information out to each one of the board members. But that being, is generally a bigger issue, a much bigger issue.
I'm very pleased with the way you're doing it right now. How you've been doing it, I've been pleased with that.
Well, I, I know I can do it better, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna strive to do it a little bit better than what I have.
Well, no, I understand that there, but I'm just saying, what you've been doing now, I'm very pleased with that and.
You keep doing what you're doing, then on top of that, if there's an executive issue, then I'll send it as well. That way we can make sure that it's getting communicated.
That fair?
Yeah, I think it's gone well.
Anything else? Any other questions on that? Uh, number three, building program, building needs assessment, so we went through that. I haven't got a date with Steve yet, so we're gonna go through all of that information. As far as talking about an architect, looking at the information, just got information from Ms. Riddle, I think Friday, Thursday or Friday, on kind of her recommendation for the CTE building and kind of which direction to talk to, I kind of want to talk to the same people when we start talking, all of our building needs there. So hopefully, later this week, I can get in contact with the architect, get them the information they need, and Steve and I can kind of sit down and start, you know, shooting from the hip on some of these other local needs, as far as the, the man that's getting started on some of that work.
When we did these walkthroughs and the list, et cetera, et cetera, there was nothing mentioned in any of them about equipment. And the equipment in our kitchens is so old that when it breaks down, we can no longer get parts, just such as the thing that came up tonight about Steve with Rick. And I think that might be something we should get into.
So we, we can add that to that list since we've not finalized anything yet?
I think it needs to be.
But, I mean, is there a budget for like new equipment upgrades every year on certain things?
Not.
And I guess that goes back to like the HVAC units, there's, there's no plan of rotating anything that we've never done.
Right now, you know, getting there, it's gonna start going down.
Right, here, here's the only thing that we need to keep in mind about that, we will, this is just Jarman's opinion, we'll need to actually put a dollar amount budgeted yearly, because that's not something we want to put into a twenty, thirty-year.
Sure.
Loan, that type of quick rise would be paying interest on that money. So, my opinion, it would be better to set a dollar amount aside.
Each year.
As we talk about a maintenance program, actually start rotating some of that stuff through.
That's what we used to do, we used to rotate, like, Rick's school this year, we get a offer, next year, Wilson's school, we get a offer, whatever, by some.
Before the, before the big things like the, the coolers and the stoves and all those things, do we have a spreadsheet somewhere with like an asset tag and number on it and per, date of purchase and?
Yes, they have to keep inventory in food purpose program, just like the general purpose does.
So is that something that could be reviewed and maybe, like we're doing with the building program, where we're looking to project? Is that something we can work on as far as, you know, a wish list for purchasing it before it actually dies?
Yeah, it's a, you know, a twenty-three school year budget, yeah, yeah, I need X amount for replace this, this and this, and, you know, twenty-four, this, this and this. Uh, I'm with Jarman, I mean, I don't think we put it into a twenty, thirty-year bond and paying an interest, and I think it's something we need to build into the year's budget upgrade year over year, just like we've talked about the HVAC units in the past. And I agree that when you let it go for X amount of years and all of it hits you at one time, it's, it's not fun, so.
Just like buying buses.
Yeah.
And similar to what you all said about the technology, the lotting so much per year, the technology of, that's just good business, I think.
Yeah, so can we get a spreadsheet of that and look at, at that equipment and project that?
And we'll probably need to do that as soon as possible, so we can start looking at it for next year's budget, and we'll put the money in there.
Thank you, Wayne.
Yeah.
Any other questions on that? Uh, moving on to number four, maintenance support. Uh, this was a follow-up from the work session we had about additional maintenance personnel uh, to do some of the work that we had laid out there. So Dr. Holman got with Cherry and put this together. Uh, so at the top, basically, that's all of their current in-house maintenance slash custodian, uh, that we have now with their salaries. Uh, off to the right, you can see this is current, including benefits is two hundred and thirty-four thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars and ninety-six cents. So that's what we're currently paying for all of their in-school maintenance slash custodians. The second bucket there would be that if we switch those from maintenance custodian to full-time maintenance, obviously, there's a pay difference there. Uh, so if you pull them out, made them maintenance tech ones, every single one of them, then your total dollar spend would be two hundred and seventy thousand, one forty-eight, thirty-one. So that's an additional thirty-six thousand dollars that you would spend moving those to maintenance tech ones. Uh, then at the bottom would be new custodians, you would have to replace those, uh, you know, adding new half-time custodians in those schools. That would, that would increase seventy-six thousand dollars by adding half-time custodians back to the schools. So the total of that would be a hundred and twelve thousand dollars incremental cost. Uh, the back page shows what it would cost if we just did a new twelve-month maintenance tech, uh, at the hourly rate, with benefits and everything included. It's forty-six thousand, seven hundred dollars. Uh, if you did two, that's ninety-three thousand, four hundred dollars with benefits. So if you hired two full-time personnel, it's probably gonna be cheaper than pulling all your maintenance folks out of the schools, making them full-time, then replacing the part-time custodians back. Uh, then, you know, uh, maintenance supervisor would have that flexibility to having them full-time, uh, instead of pulling when they needed to be pulled. Uh, so that, that's probably the best scenario. Did I leave anything out on that?
But what I was wondering, maybe we want to start out with one, uh, maybe in January, start out with one.
What's the entire cost for one?
Twenty-six, seven, forty-four, twenty-four, that'd be for the whole year now, that'd be for the whole year.
That, that's for a full year. Uh, so obviously, we've got the November meeting, we would have to approve that addition with person in December, uh, which our meeting, I think, is, was it the thirteenth maybe in December? I don't know the exact day.
I think the big question is, is what would be the difficulty in actually finding that many people to work part-time as custodians? I think that would be harder to do.
Absolutely.
Than finding one or two full-time. One or two full-time.
I like the schools left with the half custodian and half maintenance, they, rather than pull them all out and then get people to replace, seems to be just added difficulty. So to hire one is much better. Two would be nicer, but hey.
So I, and I guess from a budgeting aspect, uh, I mean, I asked Dr. Holman the same question the other day, when he shared this with me. And it's from a budgeting aspect, I mean, he said he felt comfortable in January hiring one, uh, he felt like he can offset and save that money in January, uh, then put it in, put the second person in the budget in August, uh, that he felt comfortable, uh, as far as budget wise. Let's go ahead and hire one now, uh, 'cause of reality, you're only gonna spend half that money from January to June, then a full-year salary. Then we can have another one up and ready and starting, actually, we can start on July first, 'cause it'll hit our new budget, they can work during the summer. Our second person can work during the summer, uh, because this would be a twelve-month position that they both would be when we hire them.
If we got towards the end of the year and seeing we won't have the extra money, we go ahead and hire, so they can work all through the summer. Dr. Scholes out on that second person that we hired.
Yeah, 'cause you got all of June too, that nobody's there, and I'm fine with that as long as the board approves that.
If we can do that, what I'm saying, have to give them empty buildings to work in.
And on this, which I mentioned in the meeting too, I know that we're looking at hiring two maintenance people that's there, but what are our IT needs? We've got three guys that are handling seven schools right now. So, do we need to look at maybe getting them some help also, or is it one of those things, how are we gonna put our eggs out here?
I guess, I need to say something here.
Yeah.
Uh, I think you're definitely right, everyone is definitely right, but from, from where I'm sitting, I'm just a little concerned about the money, you know? I'm concerned about that, like, um, our budget's pretty tight and pretty, it's planned out pretty tight. I just wonder if we, if we spend more, where are we gonna take that from, you know? Where are we gonna take that amount from in order to do that?
And I understand, what I was meaning on that was, okay, we're talking about hiring two maintenance techs here when we may need a person who can work with IT. So, budget-wise, is it, do we need to hire one maintenance tech to do that? And then our next person, instead of just rushing in and hiring two of those, say, okay, do we need one in IT more than we need one to maintenance, or how?
And I, I think you take that list that we had, uh, from the, the work session meeting, uh, meet with Brent and go over the items where we noted IT, uh, that has to do that and get his recommendation back as far as, uh, and there's no doubt in my mind, I think, with all the technology upgrades and things that rely on technology these days, that they need support, but.
Well, and see, that's just the same thing, is we're doing the building program, looking at all of this stuff and everything that needs maintenance to it. But IT is the exact same. You've got servers that have got to be maintained, you've got ethernet cords that are running throughout our buildings, it's gotta be maintained.
In our next meeting, could you get us a list just like that for IT, uh, if we added one IT person, what the cost would be? And obviously, you know, we know with this maintenance person, we hired one in January, it's gonna hit us for twenty-three, twenty-four thousand, half of that salary. And then just see what that number looks like for IT.
That'll give you, that'll give you a few months with that extra maintenance person, and you can see what's the productivity with that person. Is, is that, you know, and at that point, is that enough? And then do we shift our focus from the, from the maintenance to the IT? And so, you know, well, you may have got a point, but I think we definitely need to start with the maintenance person and get them on.
And in the meantime, while we're doing that, maybe it wouldn't hurt to get a list of things from Brent that need to be done. Like, we have our maintenance list for the schools. What's an IT list that we've gotten, we need to have done and all that?
Well, and a lot of that building list, uh, it had IT noted out to the side with like security camera upgrades and things like that, that IT would need to be involved in as well, so. Uh, and that's a start, you know, make sure he's got that information and knows that, plus his needs, uh, then just kind of give us a number of what that would look like at the next meeting for.
See if they're him to read that, do that.
Yes. Because, I mean, monthly maintenance on, you have the custodians and maintenance techs that are at all the schools doing the monthly maintenance there. Right now, we do not have a single IT person, part-time otherwise, at a school that can deal with the problem that ha, that happens at that school that day.
I'll work on that. So everybody good adding, uh, to the agenda next month?
Wanted to start with.
To one maintenance. Yeah, so we'll add that, Crystal, to next meeting, so.
While we're talking about hiring, I have a question. And I, I know how the process works, I don't know how it ever got put into place. With this maintenance position we're open, is this gonna be available to our in-house employees that we already have first? 'Cause I know currently on any position we have, it's opened up to anybody that wants to put in for that. I think as a good employer, your, people that already work for you should have a opportunity to get a position before you bring in someone from outside. I agree, and, and that's not just in this in particular, I mean, that's an annual position.
That's, that's good business.
We agree. Yeah, and I think if we need to look at policy or hire, or the procedure is in the future, uh, and I agree, you know, we need. Well, I think we need to post in-house for, you know, seven, ten days before we go outside to just kind of give everybody an opportunity to.
Find out if anybody in-house wants.
Interested, yeah.
Cause I mean, here we have seven, five, seven, eighteen, thirty-six-year employee. I, I think those people should be given opportunity, if they wish to, they might not.
Yeah, absolutely.
Before we go outside.
I agree, we give teachers, we give teachers that, if you're in a school and owe incomes, we let the teachers hold the posting, it's, it's fair.
We can do just the same way, if, for instance, one of those was interested and voiced their concern that they were interested, we could, I could transfer them into that and then post the last position.
Then we'll post one.
Do we have a hiring policies, the, or is it that?
And I think years ago, uh, the board agreed, I don't know if we put it policy or not, but we would, we would only post that last position. So if there was internal transfers, this person went here, this person went here, the only thing we would post would be that last position. Uh, so I guess the, to follow that suit, we would just have, you know, we, we would need to ask these part-time personnel or in-house personnel if they would be interested in that first, if they also know them to be posted from there. Then if they wanted to take it, you can make the transfer, then post them wherever they came from at that school, so.
Yeah, if more than one would be placed, I think, it's a process.
And I agree, that is a good business, yeah.
Any other questions on that? All right, if that's not, I'll go around, anybody has anything, Ms. Shirley?
No, I don't have any.
Wayne? Sal?
What's that?
Congratulations, Suffer team, all of them make it down the road.
Absolutely.
We're in laughter.
I, I would like to say that, that the people that, that retired, I, I don't always mention them by name, but Edie Williams, that's retired. She has been one teacher, I think, and I think all the teachers, if they were here, they would be cheering her on as well. Uh, all of our teachers are really good, but, but we, we have looked to Edie over the years as such a, um, she, she's not only been good for the students, she's been really good for the other teachers as well.
Inspiration.
She's been an inspiration to all of us. She's been an uplift, an edifier to so many. I, I just want to, her to know that we appreciate all that she's done, uh, as we do everyone that retires.
Picture of strength.
Yeah, she's been such a cornerstone, uh, such a, such a, a good inspiration to us all, and I want to thank her for her dedication.
All right, that's it. I'll see y'all next meeting, but I'll see you, have a happy Thanksgiving.